I'm going to start off by thanking Senator Carden for being here. This is always a great opportunity for us on the county council to meet with one of our esteemed senators. And let me just say that although this is a great opportunity for us to sit down face to face and have lunch and talk about a lot of the issues, I also appreciate the openness that you and your staff have made when it comes to being able to address a lot of the issues that are important to folks in Montgomery County. Ken Reichert does an amazing job representing you at a lot of functions and making sure that we always have an opportunity to have an ear to then go directly to you with some of the concerns and questions that we have. And we really do appreciate that spirit of working together. I did want to start off by saying that especially because we are in the Washington metropolitan area, obviously, we are very dependent upon the success of our federal government in terms of making sure that when it comes to federal installations, many of which are located right here in Montgomery County. So when it comes to funding of those particular installations that then work hand in hand with a lot of our businesses and a lot of our small businesses that we focus on, it is vital for your continued support when it comes to those. And then, of course, obviously, the other is being a Washington metropolitan region when it comes to traffic and transportation, which is a key concern of all of us here, especially when it comes to new plans like what we're looking at doing in White Oak and by Science Village, what we're doing in Yount County, what we're looking to do in other parts of the East County as well as White Flint, as well as Bethesda when it comes to the Purple Line and going all the way over to East County. So there's a lot of work that still needs to be done. We're obviously, of course, going to need your help in trying to make some of those things happen. And so I don't want to seize the pulpit when it comes to addressing some of the issues. I think this is an opportunity for my colleagues. And so what I'd like to do, colleagues, and I'm sorry, with you, is just start from my right and go to my left in terms of asking questions if you have any.
Senator Carden.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I was enjoying lunch.
I was going to let him finish his food.
Thank you very much, Senator Carden. I really appreciate it. I always enjoy this opportunity. As I've told you before, I'm very fortunate to represent the state of Maryland in the United States Senate for a couple of reasons, one of which, as my colleagues are coming back to Washington from around the country, they're in planes, I could be sitting here and learning more about what's going on in Maryland. So it does give me an opportunity to really reach out, have this type of discussion. And I always appreciate being here with the council and talking frankly about what's happening in Washington, but also to hear from your perspective what the needs are here in Montgomery County. And then I very much appreciate the good wisdom of people in Montgomery County, not only the people they've elected to the council, but your federal delegation. Thank you for my colleague, of course, Senator McCulkey, a great champion of more stability in government, and John Delaney and Christian Holland, a great federal team to work with. And I just really want to acknowledge that. Let me just make one or two opening comments, and then we can talk specifically on any issue that might be on your mind. During this recovery, where we've seen a slow rebound of job growth, and there has been job growth, it's all been in the private sector. Government has been frozen in most cases, and we've seen a reduction in the federal workforce. That's not good for Montgomery County. So we know that. We were able to get a two-year reprieve from the threat of sequestration, but it's only a two-year reprieve. And that's based upon a frozen budget from the point of view of discretionary spending. Discretionary spending is basically frozen. Our mandatory spending has been increasing, but we also have the threat of sequestration here through the next budget cycle. We'll get through this budget cycle. Our budget's starting October 1. We'll get that. But we won't necessarily know what's going to happen after that. And if we don't reach an agreement between the Democrats and Republicans, and we don't know what's going to happen after the elections, I am confident that the Senate will remain Democratic. But one thing I do know, President Obama's going to be president for two more years, and then we'll go through another national election. And the House of Representatives is likely to remain Republican under the Republican control. That's not a guarantee, but it's likely. We can't waste two and a half years. I mean, it's two and a half, we've got six months less of this Congress. We only have a two-year term, and six years left. We can't waste six months, and we certainly can't waste two and a half years. So we've got to get a budget done. And it won't be the budget, we were talking about this, it won't be the budget that I want. If it was my budget, NIH is going to get a lot more money because they do great things for this country. This is going to get more money because their missions are more challenging. FDA is going to get more money because we're asking them to do more. The National Nuclear Commission will get more money because we're asking them to do more work. So all, which is critical to what's happening here in the county. But right now, I would settle for basically a predictable budget that is current mission, maybe adjusted for inflation. That's probably as good as we can get done in this political environment, but let's at least get that done. So you don't have to worry about furloughs and automatic cuts and things like that. So that's what we're fighting for, number one. And secondly, we have some critical infrastructure programs, transportation being number one. And let's just talk a moment about that because Nancy, that was your question, so I'm going to take you out of order and answer the question of what's going on in transportation. We generally pass a six-year reauthorization. We do that because you know best. When you're planning a transportation project, you can't plan it based upon six months. You're doing the Purple Line, you've got to have a commitment that you have a partner as you start doing that. Carter Cities, you have to have a partner. And it can't be a partner for six months, it's got to be a partner to get the job done. And that takes multi-year planning. So we need a six-year reauthorization. Good news, one of the two committees I serve, one of jurisdiction, the Environment and Public Works, the primary committee, passed a six-year reauthorization of the service transportation programs in this country on a unanimous vote. Democrats and Republicans agreed. And the reason we are able to get six votes is they recognize that what we did in MAP-21 was good. So we didn't try to reinvent the reforms that we put in MAP-21, which includes, by the way, transportation enhancement programs, which are used by local governments to do some really neat things. That's included in it. And we recognized that we couldn't take it to a new level with existing revenues, so we just used current levels. But we recognized also we could supplement that through creative programs, one of which the Congressman John Delaney has come in with ways that we could increase infrastructure funding through Infrastructure Bank. Another one that I've brought to the table is to use the tax credit program like we have with low-income housing, use a similar tax credit program for three P private-public partnership programs to supplement transportation. So that's some of the things we're looking at. That's the positive news. The negative news is we're not going to get it done. We've already conceded that the best we can get done before November elections is a short-term patch. So we've got to get that done because if not, come next month, your federal checks will be reduced dramatically. Dramatically. Now, you'll still have, fortunately, the state has more flexibility because of what the legislature did on transportation. We have better shape than most states. But your federal checks will be reduced dramatically, and there'll be no long-term ability to plan. But if we get, and we expect we'll get a patch done probably this week in the United States Congress, and send it to the President, he'll sign it. So we won't run out of money this year, but the problem is there is a bipartisan commitment in the Senate that we need to pass a six-year bill this year. So, okay, we'll work on it from between now and November and pass it in lame duck session. That's the game plan. That's the game plan. The House is not on board with this. And I am concerned that we're losing the momentum to get it done by the end of the year. The House has also insisted that we put enough money in the transportation bill to last until May of next year. If they put money in for May of next year, then I don't think we act until next year. And then I'm worried that we act with a short-term patch rather than a long-term commitment. So a lot of us are fighting hard, and we are fighting. There will be an amendment on the floor this week, the Senator Carper is leading the charge on, which I'm co-sponsor of. It was a Carper-Carden amendment in the Finance Committee. And we'll continue to do that, that would force us to act before the end of the year. It would keep the money coming, but force us to act by the end of the year. And we're going to try to keep that pressure up. But I just really wanted you to know the realities, and the realities are not necessarily that promising that will give you the predictability you need at an early date. But we're going to obviously work very hard to make that a reality the best that we can. So that's the news from Washington. It's not the best news, but I must tell you, we are, we know the American people would be outraged if we give any disruption in our transportation programs, any disruption in our government again. So I think we'll avoid that. And then lastly, part of this is a more modern way of funding transportation. The gasoline tax is outdated. We have outperformed on energy efficiency with CAFE standards much more than the projections of revenues. That's why we don't have enough money to fund a six-year program without alternative. We need more revenue to do it. So we have to find different revenue sources. On Friday, I visited a company called Borbeck, which is developing a new way of doing battery production, which if it can be used in automobiles, we're going to be able to have an affordable auto that can do electric power for a couple hundred miles. I know we can do it today, but it's a little pricey if we can get it affordable. So if you're trying to predict where we're going to be 10 years from now, alternative fuels are going to become much more dominant in the marketplace. So we need to find a different way to fund our transportation program. So we have ideas on that. And there's several proposals out there, including per-barrel oil fee, which is more comprehensive than just the gasoline. And we have carbon fees that we're looking at as a way of helping to finance transportation. So there are alternative ways that are out there that we are exploring in an effort to try to be able to do predictable transportation funding in the future. Sorry I was so long, but this is.
Very important. Can I ask you a quick follow-up?
Guys, I wanted to go anywhere.
I just wanted to follow up on something you said. I just wanted to know what he meant by you'd be forced to act. What does it mean that you'd be forced to act by the end of the year?
The amendment would only expire on December 33rd, actually, on December 17th. So the funding would only go until December 17th, or December 18th. We use that date because that's when the lame duck session is likely to end, like, probably be a week later. But it will end, I hope, by December 25th. But we would be in lame duck, so we would require action in the lame duck session of Congress.
Thank you. So Senator Carden, again, thank you for your steadfastness in working to protect the interests of Montgomery County. We know that you understand, but we'll have some specifics. And so I'll turn it over to Councilmember Reamer first, and we'll just go around to Councilmember Reamer.
I didn't have a question yet, but nice to see you, Senator.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Appreciate it. Councilmember Brillen.
Senator, first, a thank you. Just last week, I met with your staff in your office and a bunch of federal agencies to talk about our county's Tiger grant application with respect to White Flint in particular and trying to get BRT, which, as you know, is just very important to our county's future. And your staff is excellent, and your support is just so much appreciated. We do need to make this happen, and I hope we can make this happen. I'm going to ask a non-traditional question because every day I wake up and read the paper, and it's too painful. It's like the world is just falling apart. You have been so active in foreign affairs. We see what's happening in Europe, we see what's happening in the Middle East. It's really, it's all I can do is just to put the paper aside because it's too depressing. Can you just share your thoughts on that? And it's depressing in part because we, those of us who sort of like the United States having influence in the world, it also feels like it's spinning out of our ability to influence events. And you've been so active on foreign affairs. I'm just curious, is your own thoughts, what do you tell people?
Well, it's a very dangerous time in the world. A couple of things are happening that the world, the civilized world has to stand up against. One is Russia. We all want peace. But if Russia can go unchallenged to use its military to change territorial lines in Europe, we're in extreme danger because it'll be used beyond Europe. What Russia did in Ukraine, taking over Crimea and interfering on East Ukraine, if China did the same thing in the China Seas, it could bring global commerce to a halt. So the circumstances are extremely dangerous. We already have powder cans all over the world, and we could have more explosions. And so Russia, it's not really Russia, it's really one person, Mr. Putin. He has to be challenged. And I don't mean militarily, I mean stand up. And we need Europe to be stronger on sanctions than it is today in isolating Russia. Now, I think as a result of the Malaysian airline crash, that Europe will now take stronger action. There's no question in my mind that Russia is responsible for that disaster. They may not have pulled the actual trigger, but it was their equipment and their training and their expectations that led to the downing of that Malaysian airline. And it may have been that they were directly responsible, and we need to have an investigation. They clearly are covering up the investigation. That's another sign that they are complicitous. They're doing everything they can now to make it more difficult for an independent investigation. So that's one set of factors that have to go challenged. And that's to challenge by a strong European response. The United States has been strong and is providing the leadership. We have to be stronger with Europe, united in isolating Russia. The second is the Sunni Shiite issue, which is historic, and we understand that. Here, we have invested a great deal in Iraq. As I think most people here know, I thought it was wrong to send our troops into Iraq to begin with. I certainly don't want our troops in Iraq again. But we need to insist upon an Iraqi government that's inclusive to all elements of the population, including the Sunni population. And that's been a challenge for the current government in Iraq. It's leaving a void and an opening. And of course, what's happening in Syria is just adding to the areas of concern. I hope that we can reach an agreement with Iran. That would be a game changer for the Middle East if we can. It's a game changer if we can't. So the stakes are very high whether we can by November 24th now reach an agreement with Iran. And then the flare-up between Hamas and Israelis is tragic. And it just adds to the complexities of what we read every day in the papers. Then put on that what's happening at our border. And I want to talk about that just for one moment because, you know, I chair the U.S. Helsinki Commission and I'm very strong on human rights issues, and I'll be speaking globally about thanking Jordan for keeping their borders open so that those that are in jeopardy in Syria can go into Jordan or go into Turkey or go into these countries. And yet, where are our borders? The children are at great risk, and they are. They've been victimized by traffickers, and it's not safe for them and their native countries. But why aren't our borders more welcoming to these people? President Obama asked for $3.7 billion of aid to deal with the problems of the children on our border. Only $300 million go to the three countries where the children are coming from primarily. So why aren't we working to make a statement like we did when we used development assistance to change the globe on AIDS? Why aren't we doing the same thing for protection of children? So I think a lot of this is U.S. leadership, and whether we use it in a consequential way to make the world safer and not just being willing to say, you know, we have the military might. But do we have the ability to really work in a productive way to help countries around the world so that we don't have these types of explosions? I have confidence we will. I really do. I have confidence in this country. I think we've hit such an extreme point that we've got to pull back.
Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Senator. I thank you very much for your all-starter comments. And with regards to our transportation infrastructure needs and funding, as you know, we are very dependent on making sure that we're able to get some support in some of the projects that we already have underway. So I really appreciate the fact that you're so knowledgeable and understand and can, you know, help us as much as possible. Touching back on this issue that you just described in terms of the crisis at the border and the refugee humanitarian crisis that we're seeing with children coming into our own country. Just a couple of questions. I mean, one of the issues that has come up as a clear focus is the fact that in the Central American countries, there is definite a lack of just judiciary. I mean, it's just nonexistent. Obviously, the drug cartels have taken over these countries. That's the primary reason why all these children are showing up. You know, mothers have to choose between their children being slaughtered in their neighborhoods versus just sending them out here for some hope that maybe they will survive. So I mean, there is a clear problem that has been identified that I think should be of interest to us because now we have to figure out a way to, number one, absorb and try to figure out how we deal with this refugee crises. But in local jurisdictions as ours, given that the region here, the metropolitan region, has always been a welcoming place for Central Americans when they came in the 1980s, we're obviously right now trying to understand the scope of this problem. And as a local government, trying to then even figure out what would be a response. And so, you know, are there any conversations also with regards to how can the United States intervene in some way, and will we provide aid to ensure that these countries are responsible for reforming their judiciary to not just allow this rampant violence that then we have to, you know, account for and respond?
Well, first of all, the three countries, El Salvador, Honduras, and Guatemala, three countries which are the principal countries where the unaccompanied children are coming from. Our total development assistance is modest. We don't invest a lot. This is our hemisphere. And it's a couple hundred million dollars total. There's only one, one country, El Salvador qualifies for the Millennium Challenge Grant. The other two do not at this point. We have tools available for us to deal with good governance, and we are funding some of those tools for good governance. So we do have partnerships. There is leadership in one of the three countries that seems sincere in improving good governance issues and getting, dealing with the drug cartels, dealing with the gangs, dealing with the criminal elements, traffickers, et cetera. Mexico appears to be more willing to deal with the problems on their southern border rather than allowing the transit to take place the way that they did. So we see a willingness, but quite frankly, we haven't ended up anywhere near enough resources to be consequential in changing the climate in these countries. And it's in our interest to do that. I mean, just look at it from a selfish financial, do we want to spend $3 billion to deal with the consequences as of where spending a couple hundred million more so that it's safer for children in their country? So the first message, though, very first message, and I agree with some of the more conservative elements to say this, we need to get the facts on the ground so that families know the risk factors concerning transit to our borders because there is a high probability that a child that's put in transit is going to be victimized, victimized big time. And it's extremely dangerous, and they may not live. It's a very, very dangerous situation. Secondly, they need to know that their legal status when they reach our border is one of deportation. That's their legal status. They have no legal status to be in our country. Yes, we will, if they've been victimized, if they are subject to asylum, they need to have those rights protected. And we have to make sure they have counsel, et cetera, so that they have the right under our laws. We have certain laws. People have been, are victims of traffickers, or they are subject to the fear of their life at their return, then they're entitled to certain rights here in our country. But it takes a long time, and it's not an easy process. They need to understand that. And then what you said is where we need to be. We need to be working with the three countries, and they're all willing to work with us in a consequential way to deal with the causes of gang violence. A lot in these countries, you can be killed if you don't join a gang. I mean, that's the facts of life. You can easily be sold into traffickers, into prostitution, that's common. So we've got to deal with those underlying problems. And the President's numbers do that. I mean, he does provide money to deal with those problems. But to me, he doesn't have the game plan. He doesn't have, it's not a big enough vision to what we need to do in Central America. So I hope we have a bigger vision. If we're going to spend $3.7 billion, spend a much larger percentage of that dealing with the problems in the countries because every day there are thousands of children arriving. So let's do something about that.
Thank you for that. I would only say, just in closing, that I think this speaks to the larger issue of a need for us in the United States to take a more proactive approach to Latin American foreign relations. And because, you know, sooner or later, it does show up in our doorsteps.
Absolutely.
And so I appreciate your leadership in this, and I know that you understand that. And hopefully, we can, in some ways, this is a tragic situation, but maybe this can shift the conversation a little bit. It's so bipartisan and it's really focusing on the wrong, in my opinion, the wrong angle. I think that we just need to have a much better and a different approach to Latin America, Central America, Latin America. Thank you.
Councilmember Reamer.
Thanks. Well, thank you again for the good work on behalf of the community and your dedication over a long, long time to that. It's very frustrating to read about the dysfunction in Washington. And I know you're frustrated as well. So what, if you could make any changes that you could make to how Washington works or the things that drive how Washington doesn't work, what would you do to change it? If you could make the political reforms, if you could make institutional reforms, what would you do?
Well, first of all, thank you for your service and thank you for that question. I guess what I would do is put the leaders in a room like this, lock the door, give them no food or water. Tell them they can't come out. Give them a real deadline that it means something. I mean, it's, look, we've got to make decisions, bottom line. And here is, you talk about frustration. Here's the frustrating part. I think there are the votes in Washington to implement those decisions. I think there is enough Democrats and Republicans that understand the realities of the division in Washington and would support policies that represent a compromise to move this country forward. And it would look something like this. It would look something like basically a current mission budget adjusted by inflation. It wouldn't have the growth that I would like to see, wouldn't have, because I really do think we can't stand still as a country. We've got to put a lot more resources into a lot of areas, but we're not going to get that in this political environment. And I would settle for predictability over what we've gone through over the last couple of Congresses. And it probably would have a tax code similar to the one that I am writing. I challenge any of you to try to refer on the current income tax. And it's not, in my view, it's never going to happen. So I think I talked about this once before, but I would use a progressive consumption tax. Just think about this one point. We, of all the industrial nations of the world, we depend less on government. Therefore, we have less revenue coming in than every other industrial nation in the world. So why do we have the highest marginal tax rates in the industrial world? We should have the lowest marginal, should be a huge advantage. We shouldn't have inversions to Great Britain, should be inversions of Great Britain to the United States. And the way to do that is to recognize that we're the only industrial country in the world that doesn't rely on a consumption tax for its federal revenues, for its national revenues. And because our income tax is so unfair, we can have a more progressive consumption tax than we do our current income tax. Middle-income families can actually pay less. I will introduce this bill before the end of the year. And what it does, it has a basic, I don't have to get the exact numbers, but you would have a consumption tax at about 10%. And that would be the lowest in the industrial world. You would pay no consumption taxes if your family of income less than $50,000. You would get immediately back through payroll tax credits or through a debit card. Income taxes would start at about $100,000 in taxable income, be a 15% rate. At $400,000, it'd be about 25% rate of taxable income. Simplified with just four deductions rather than the current complexities, which would be state and local. Your benefits at work, which are retirement and health benefits, it would be charitable, and it'd be mortgage interest. So there are four that are, I think, justified, but more importantly politically, that gives you a saleable package where you can get something done. And the corporate tax rate would be at 15%, which would be the lowest corporate tax rate in the industrial world. All of that adds up. And for my Republican friends, you have a circuit breaker that means that if it raises more revenue, we say it's an automatic adjustment of rate, so you're not building a bigger government as a result of it. There are Republicans and Democrats interested in that. So I think that can get done. You have that, you have the revenue you need, you have the budget you need. The last part is entitlement reform, which I don't think is quite as difficult as everybody says it is because a good part of it is in healthcare delivery system reform, which is doing things much more efficiently than we're doing today. We waste so much money in our healthcare system, we still do. The fundamentals of the Affordable Care Act are sound, but let's put enforcement behind what we said we're going to get done. I think Republicans would go for that. If we do that, then I think we have the predictability that you need. We've made some decisions, and we'll save to the next national elections whether we have a more progressive government, which I would like to see, to deal with the problems. That's what I would, if I had a magic wand, that's what I would do. That's what I would -- if I had a magic wand, that's what I would do. And I would, again, lock people in a room, give them a deadline, tell them they have to reach a decision, or they don't get any food or water.
But, Phil, are there systemic issues that you think are getting away?
Oh, yes.
What's -- if this is what needs to be done, why isn't it getting done?
Right.
Are there things that are -- is it in the short-term interest, to political interest, not to get these things done?
Well, there are.
And what would change that, you know, in terms of providing, whether it's a finance reform, or whether it's gerrymandering reform? What would change the self-interest calculus?
I got to be careful, because I do think we have the best system in the world. We really do. So, I don't want to blow it up. I think we have the best political system in the world. I like the independent branches of government. I like the way we do business. I like the independence that we have in this country. I like being an American, so I don't want that to change. And at times, I even like the Supreme Court of the United States. Not this year, but I like it. But so, I guess what I would say, yes, you do need some reforms. I think congressional redistricting, we've got to find a better way. And the state of Maryland's a classic example. Now, we are Democrats. We control the process, and we have butchered it up terribly, and it's just not right. And one day, the current people aren't going to be there, and we're going to be stuck with these districts. So, it -- we do need to do a better job. Of course, in nationwide, we're in the minority. The Democrats are in the minority more than their majority, so we've paid a heavy price politically as a result of congressional redistricting, may in fact have lost control of the House of Representatives because of congressional redistricting. So, I think you're right about that. On campaign finance, you're -- I would -- I'm co-sponsor and support a constitutional amendment as a result of Supreme Court's absurd decision saying that corporations have the rights of individuals to contribute money under the First Amendment. There is no history at all for corporations having First Amendment privileges. To the contrary, you know, corporations created by us as a -- by legislators, we can certainly create the rights that they have and the rights that they don't have. So, that's absolutely ridiculous. So, I would come in pretty heavy on the campaign finance reform. To me, elections should be won based upon the issues. You should -- that we should require the networks to provide free airtime, do debates, and severely restrict these 30-second ads. In all due respect, I know you all have brilliant 30-second ads, but I think they're a disservice to the public, to be frankly. So, yes, I think they're -- I think the way we finance campaigns is terribly corrupting to our system, not to our -- not to the individuals, but to the system. So, that needs to be fundamentally changed.